Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 23rd day of April in the year 2025. My name is Marquis Harris Dawson. I serve as Chair of this committee. Public comment for today's meeting will be taken in person in this John Farrow Council Chambers. Mr. Clerk, let's begin our proceedings by calling the roll.
Yes, Mr. President. Blumenfeld, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Hutt, Hurado, Lee, McCosker, Nazarian, Padilla, Price, Price, Rahman, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslavski, ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
All right, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes of April 22nd, 2025.
Councilmember Padilla moves. Councilmember McCosker seconds. What's next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Soto Martinez moves. Councilmember Hernandez seconds. What's next?
Mr. President, there is a request to hold items seven and eight on the desk, as well as item 53 on the continuation agenda.
All right, without objection, that'll be the order. What's next?
Items one and two are items noticed for public hearing. Items three through 29 are items for which public hearings have been held. The Trade, Travel and Tourism Committee reports for items 22 and 23 have been submitted and are available online in their respective council files. Items 30 through 52 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Item 53 on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
All right, those items are now before us. Specialists members, specialists to the west. Councilmember Hernandez?
President, I would like to call items 12 special for comments.
All right, and on this side, Councilmember Padilla.
I would like to call item 19 special for comments and a separate vote.
All right, any other specialists members? Councilmember Rodriguez?
Yes, seven, we have an amendment that's going to be circulating, and eight was for, held for comments.
What, which one held for comments?
Eight.
Eight, so seven, amendment on seven and eight, held for comments. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, Council President. I would like to call item 22 for questions for Council District 14.
All right, item number 22, on behalf of Council District 14. Any other specialists members? All right, what items? Councilmember Price, of course.
Mr. President, thank you. Out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to accuse myself from item 51 because it's unclear who is working on the project.
All right.
Thank you.
Any others? Councilmember Lee?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I call item number 17 special for comments and, for an amendment?
Uh, no, for...
An amendment and comments?
Oh. All right, Bob, guys, Councilmember Nazarian's here. He'll fill you in.
Councilmember from the second district, Mr. Nazarian.
Thank you, Council President. Sorry, I have a slow walk right now. Moving to adopt the ENE report for item 17.
All right, seconded by Mr. Lee.
Thank you.
All right, any others? All right, seeing none, what's available for us to vote on today at this time?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items three through six, nine through 11, 13 through 16, 18, 21, 24 through 29.
All right, those items are now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item 17 called special by Councilmember Lee for comments, as well as to motion Nazarian Lee to adopt the Energy and Environment Committee report.
All right, Mr. Lee, no comments, just the amendment? All right, all right, so that item is now before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item 19 called special by Councilmember Padilla for comments and a separate vote.
Councilmember Padilla.
I just wanted to say, members, that I think this is something that I hope we can vote no on. I don't think it's appropriate for us to ease our power over to the Department of Public Works. My understanding is that this motion was created because we didn't want to hear individuals that come to public comment and talk about whether they agree or disagree which artist or creative person deserves to be on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. So I just want to mention that I don't think that's an appropriate excuse, so to speak, to ease our right to approve and disapprove these. So I will be voting no, and hopefully some of you will reconsider.
All right, any other comments on this item? All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes. Mr. President, for the record...
I think Councilmember wanted to be recorded as a no vote.
For the record, that would be 11 ayes, one no. By Councilmember Padilla, the ordinance will be held over to Tuesday, April 29th, for second consideration.
All right, what's next?
The council may not consider item 12 called special by Councilmember Hernandez for comments.
Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Thank you. I want to start off by saying thank you to my colleagues on the Budget and Finance Committee and the Ad Hoc Committee for LA Recovery for their input on a motion I co-introduced with Councilmember Kern Price to explore emergency financial relief options for families affected by the January 2025 wildfires in Pacific Palisades and Altadena. The emotional financial aftershocks are still being felt. Some families are still living out of suitcases, and some are still wondering how they're going to pay the rent next month. And, you know, after the fire, we, there was a lot more that we could have done, particularly around our tenants, but we saw that the county, the county moved much more quicker, and we're able to provide some protections for our tenants here in the city, and especially for our outdoor workers, which I'm really grateful for. And I just want to make sure that we acknowledge those gaps, so that when a crisis happens next, we're able to act better and show up better for, especially our communities that have been most impacted, not directly by maybe the crisis, but the reverberations such as job loss. And I know that we can do better. The motion before you is a first step toward changing that. It directs our city administrative officer and legislative analyst to report back with options to support the proposed guaranteed basic income program or emergency cash assistance for workers affected by the January 2025 wildfires. The report instructs CIFD to provide the council information on using up to 1 million from 2024-2025 community development block grant funds for emergency assistance programs. These programs will likely include rental assistance. And so I hope that we can learn from this moment and and these climate-related disasters that are going to be happening more frequently, and we want to be a resilient city. We want to be a safe city, and we want to make sure that we don't leave anybody behind. And so, colleagues, I urge your support on this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Seeing no other speakers on this item, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item eight called special by Councilmember Rodriguez for comments.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, it was over 100 days ago that our city faced one of the most destructive wildfires in our city's most recent history, and the Hearst-Kenneth Palisades Sunset Fire swept through Los Angeles with a force of winds unlike anything we've ever seen or experienced before. And while our response with the resources that we have were immediate, we know that preventative measures are always the most cost-effective solution to protecting our neighborhoods throughout Los Angeles, and frankly, throughout California, knowing that wildfire season has become a new normal for Californians, but especially most recently experienced by Angelenos. And we got to think about how we rebuild, but we must think about how we rebuild smarter, how we rebuild in a manner that is actually going to mitigate so much of the risk that many of our neighborhoods continue to be exposed to. That's why I had introduced the motion that is on today's agenda, directing the Department of Building and Safety, along with the Fire Department and Planning Department, with supporting efforts of other agencies to report back with recommendations on how we have a more fire-resistant construction incentive program. That is critical. But it's tied into and dovetails with the motion that I just introduced today, a resolution in support of Senator Schiff's effort to create a tax incentive and, uh, tax support for Angelenos or for all Californians to be able to derive the resources that they need for the home hardening efforts and more fire-resistant protections to their homes. Techniques such as fire-resistant roofing, ember-resistant vents, and ignition-resistant siding have all demonstrated very clear benefits and results. And with insurers on the fringe of leaving California, we all must do our parts to be far more proactive in creating a housing environment that is actually, has greater fire resiliency. And so it's for that reason that I have brought this motion that is before you today, and I look forward to you supporting the resolution that I've introduced in support of Senator Schiff's legislation, because we have to look at all levels of government, whether it's the support and resources and tax incentives that will be provided by the federal government, parlayed with whatever the state might come through with, but it's all in how we rebuild and how Angelenos actually have the tools and the information to create a more resilient housing stock. Because as we rebuild, we can't rebuild for just the next kindling for the next wildfire. We have to build smarter, and we have to look at how we integrate those very fire-resistant approaches to the existing housing stock that we have today. And these, all of these pieces coupled together will help to provide the resources for Angelenos to be able to do that. And so with that, I ask for your aye vote.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Rodriguez. So this, seeing no other comments, this item is before us. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item 22 called special for Councilmember Hurado for questions, and for which the Trade, Travel and Tourism Committee report has been distributed and posted on the respective council file.
Councilmember Hurado.
Thank you so much, Council President. This is regarding item 22?
Yes.
Um, I'd like to call Mr. Adams to the table.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think you might have to press it, maybe? And pull it as closely as...
Hello?
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Adams. Can you speak your name and your position into the record, please?
I'm Mark Adams. I'm the Government Affairs Director for Los Angeles World Airports.
Thank you for joining us today. I just wanted to ask a couple questions about this lease. Obviously, Customs and Border Protection has been utilizing this space for some time. Can you confirm what operations occur in this facility? Is it international cargo screening, or what is it?
This is office space and some training rooms, basically, for the Customs and Border Facility, Customs and Border Protection staff based at LAX, who are primarily engaged with the cargo operations at LAX. There are some CBP operations related to customer-facing facilities, such as, customer-facing operations such as Global Entry. If you apply for a Global Entry card or something like that, you will go to this office to get your, you know, fingerprints and such taken for the Global Entry card. But it's all CBP offices and, like I said, a few training rooms.
So in addition to international cargo screening, there are some screenings conducted of individuals by the Customs and Border Protections at this facility?
Well, it would just be, as far as I know, it would just be people who, you know, US citizens who applied for a Global Entry card and are finalizing their, their application process there.
So obviously, CBP and ICE both fall under the Department of Homeland Security. So I want to be crystal clear before approving this lease that this space will not be allowed to execute or support any detainment or other ICE activities. Can you confirm that?
Yes, ICE does not have any offices in this space, and there are no detention facilities in this space.
But can CBP subcontract or bar, like, allow other federal departments to use that space for a purpose other than what has been identified and stated on the record today?
No.
Excellent. And if they're, if they go astray, is there, how can we make sure that none of this happens under our watch in our city, which is a sanctuary city, during this federal administration, who seems to do whatever they want?
Well, I think that would be, I'm not exactly familiar with the detail, every detail of the lease, but I think that would be a violation of their lease conditions, because that's what, you know, they're leasing it for office space.
Okay.
And so if, if that were to happen, we would certainly follow up with them to, you know, enforce those lease provisions.
I appreciate that. And to be, the frustration I'm feeling and the passion is not directed at you. It's the global...
Understood.
The issue, but is it possible that we can amend the lease to include a provision that it would be in compliance with all city laws, especially the sanctuary, sanctuary city ordinance, and that it won't run contrary to it?
I'm not sure. I would have to consult with the city attorney on that.
Okay. I'm hoping we can make a friendly amendment to make sure that we can, I don't know how to do this, but report back or put, uh, come back with the lease with an amendment to it that, with the city attorney's guidance, that this lease will also be in compliance of the sanctuary city ordinance and all city laws that are protecting immigrants. Because leases, from what I understand, can have a general and vague purposes, and if the Customs and Border Protection Agency can conduct cargo screenings and individual screenings with a vague term that's not specific, I'm afraid that'll be vague and ambiguous enough that it could be utilized for negative, negative instances which we, as a council, do not approve of. So I would hope we can add that friendly amendment. Thank you.
Is there a second to this motion?
Councilmember Hernandez, seconds. All right, any other speakers on this item? All right, Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on item 22.
Okay, so given, given the council member's amendment, we're going to hold this and deal with it after public comment. One, it allows the public to comment on it, and two, we can get the language to mirror what the councilwoman has requested, and the Councilmember Hernandez has seconded. What's next?
Mr. President, the council may now consider item 53 on the continuation agenda called special for Councilmember Hutt.
Councilmember Hutt? Or is this Councilmember Hurado?
Which one?
53, 5-3.
Oh, the, sorry.
53?
Yeah, on, on 53, we have the motion. It should be seconded. Do you have the motion? The amendment to the motion?
The amendment has not been distributed for item 53. This will be held on the desk.
All right, so we'll hold it on the desk through public comment. They will get the amendment.
Thank you.
And come back. Councilmember Hurado, did you have comments on this?
Uh, I think my comments on this was that I'd move to reconsider item 53 from yesterday's council agenda, which is council file 250408, and approve the matter. That was, I don't know if that was added previously. I'm sorry, Council President.
All right, we'll, we'll get it straight, and we'll come back to it after public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, item seven will be held on the desk for distribution of the amendment, and for item 53 on yesterday's, Tuesday, April 22nd council agenda, a reconsideration vote is required for reconsideration, and that would be communication from the city clerk and ordinance of intention first consideration relative to the establishment of the property-based Little Tokyo Property and Business Improvement District to levy assessments on real property.
All right, so let's open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right.
Mr. President, the council may now move on to presentations.
All right, we have a very, very special presentation this morning. I want to turn the floor over to Council District Five, Councilwoman Jaroslavski.
Okay, first...
Councilmember Blumenfield.
Yes. I want to start by thanking Councilwoman Jaroslavski for putting this important presentation together. I know this day is significant for so many. It's for, certainly for my family, for Jews around the diaspora, around the world, really all people around the world. What we're talking about is Yom HaShoah, which in Hebrew literally means the Day of Remembrance of the Holocaust. Even though this day was officially created 65 years ago, and the Holocaust ended 80 years ago, too many people really don't understand what happened and what it was all about. Sadly, so many of the survivors have passed on, so it's especially essential that we recognize this day for all of those loved ones who were lost in the Holocaust, whether they be Jews, gays, gypsies, Poles, all of the folks who were targeted. And 6 million Jewish lives were snuffed out. For what reason? Simply because they were Jewish. It's more important in many ways than I can think of in my entire lifetime, as we get further away from that historic moment in history, to be reminded of, especially, of what happened, especially for the younger generation, to understand what happened, how it came to be that, that all these souls were wiped out. You know, the, the famous quotation, if, if, if we do not remember history, we're doomed to repeat it, whether you go with the George Santana version, or the Winston Churchill version of that quote, or any of the others. It's important because these, this horrible scar on our history, this didn't just happen overnight. Totalitarianism is something that grew, and it grew right in front of people's eyes who were, you know, just looking the other way. And the parallels in, in today's world are just too striking to not mention, as we look all around the world and, and we see a lot of parallels to what happened pre-World War II in Germany. So days like today where we remember the past are really important. And, and we remember not just what happened, but, but the human aspect of it. And, and I know Councilwoman Jaroslavski and some of the folks here talking about Anne Frank's experience, how, how it can be humanized, are really important so that that history doesn't just become history. It becomes very much alive in us, and it becomes that warning for the future, for a future that hasn't been determined yet, but that is, is, could be quite frightening as we look forward. So Yom HaShoah begins tonight at sundown, goes into Thursday at sundown. It's a time for meditation, reflection, somber memorial, and I invite all of my colleagues to do so. We're all connected, and, and to recognize some of the heroes who tried to, to save folks during the Holocaust. Councilwoman Jaroslavski will talk about that, and, and we'll touch about that in just a moment, and in fact, I'm going to turn it over to her who organized this incredible presentation. So thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield. Thank you for allowing us to do this today, Council President. The Holocaust isn't distant history. Across the Jewish community and beyond, most people either lost family or know someone who did. This isn't something from centuries ago. It happened one, two, maybe three generations back. These are people who our parents knew. And for many, it still feels very close. But that closeness, as Councilmember Blumenfield says, is beginning to slip away. The survivors who shared their memories are fewer each year. Their voices shaped how we understood this history. Now we have to ask how we can continue to remember, because remembrance isn't passive. It's a decision. It's a responsibility. It's how we carry forward truth in the face of denial, dignity in the face of dehumanization, and the stories of those who can no longer speak for themselves. This year marks the 80th anniversary of Anne Frank's death, and we chose to center today's presentation on her legacy because she reminds us what remembrance can look like. She was a teenage girl, a student, a daughter, a writer, and even from hiding, she gave voice to something lasting, clarity, perspective, and a deep sense of humanity, which is why her story resonates so deeply all these years later. Her diary survived when she did not, and because of that, generations have come to understand the Holocaust as a personal tragedy, not a distant event. The Anne Frank Foundation carries that legacy forward. They help young people become truth tellers, sharing what they've learned with their peers and stepping into the role of remembrance themselves. And that work is why we're here today. So please join me in welcoming Sophia Shield of Anne Frank LA, who will share more about their mission and introduce the students joining us this morning. Welcome.
Thank you so much to Councilmember Blumenfield and Councilwoman Jaroslavski, and to the entire Los Angeles City Council for having us here today. My name is Sophia Shield, and it is truly an honor to be representing Anne Frank LA in the commemoration of Yom HaShoah. As the grandchild of Holocaust survivors, I have never questioned the importance of learning about the Holocaust. For me, it is the same as learning my own family's history. And from an early age, it was ingrained in me that we must never forget these parts of history, lest we repeat the horrors of the past. As co-founder and managing director of Anne Frank Los Angeles, I have the privilege of innovating new ways for young people of all backgrounds to connect with these themes in order for them to learn the importance of standing up for what is right and how they can be upstanders rather than bystanders. Today, you will hear from three of our youth ambassadors about what they have learned and gained from our programming, how they connect to Anne Frank's stories, and how, and how they have applied lessons from the Holocaust to their own lives, in addition to why they think it is important for young people in Los Angeles and beyond to keep learning about these topics. A special thank you to everyone here, and also to Alan Zipper for understanding the importance of giving young people the opportunity to engage with local government. I want to point out that four years ago, the city of Los Angeles worked with us to be the first city in the coun, in the country to declare Anne Frank Day. This year, our fourth and fifth cities have declared the day, including the first city outside of Los Angeles County. Anne Frank Day is growing bigger and bigger, and we are very excited to be back downtown on May 12th for the official Anne Frank Day celebration at the Los Angeles Central Public Library. My grandparents survived Transit Camp Vesterborg and Concentration Camp Bergen-Belsen, two of the camps Anne Frank was also in. My grandfather was my best friend and worked tirelessly to teach young people about his experiences in order to prevent something like the Holocaust from ever happening again. I am now carrying on his legacy, bringing the yellow star he wore in the camps with me here today. I am grateful to use this platform to amplify some amazing young voices who, like Anne Frank, are using their words to express their dreams for an even brighter future. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. So I'm very excited to introduce our first youth ambassador, Cameron Williams. Welcome.
Well, my name is Cameron Williams. I'm 17, and I attend Oakview High School. First and foremost, I want to say thank you all for having me here. It's an honor to share my experience with you all and, like, as a peer guide for Anne Frank LA. Being chosen for this role has meant a lot to me. I was able to learn more things than I thought I would ever learn about Anne's life, about human nature, about people. One thing stood out more than anything in this entire experience, and that was her hope. Even when her world was falling apart, she held on to the deep belief that she knew that people were good inside. About a month ago, I had severe attendance issues, and I was not really a good student. And the one day I decided to show up to school, this is one thing that was really important to me because... to me because I hadn't learned anything remotely closely to this. So I found a passion in this, and I found an experience that I loved. Like during my time guiding other people through this exhibit and her story, the one thing that stands out to them is that very same thing I noticed, and it's hope. It's not exactly what you expect from someone in her situation, but it's what makes it so important. Even for her age, she was a very emotionally intelligent girl. Anne's story has taught me, and I think has taught a lot of the people who know her story, that even in the darkest of times, we have the power to choose hope. We have the power to be good to each other, to stand up for one another, and to never stop believing in each other. For me, that's what being a peer guide is all about. It's about passing on that message so that we don't forget and that we continue to grow, and that we trust in one another and trust everyone. Thank you again for allowing me to share this experience with you all.
Thank you, Cameron. Next, I'd like to call on Jasmine Ramos.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jasmine Ramos. I'm 15 years old, and I currently attend Theodore Roosevelt High School. When I first learned about the program being offered to teach us about Anne Frank, I didn't think much of it. I had learned about the Holocaust from classes before, but a personal story like Anne Frank's is what stood out to me. I was able to learn the experience Anne shared with us through her diary, and this allowed me to realize the importance of her story. Anne Frank, a girl who was around my age during the time of the Holocaust, went through so much just because she was Jewish. I could never imagine the feelings and the experiences she went through and had to go through during this time. So much was taken away, not only from her, but from other targeted groups just because of who they were. During the time of the Nazis, they wanted to erase these people and their memory, and yet it is through this learning that we remember them. We remember them in many ways, in order to acknowledge the unfairness that they faced. This is why it's important for our students, our community, and everyone to learn more about the Holocaust, so that we don't not repeat these mistakes of our past. Since then, we have improved so much together, but I hope we can continue. Los Angeles is a home to a community full of diversity. We learn of each other's cultures and beliefs, and we come together to show appreciation and acceptance. I sincerely hope we can continue to keep this diversity with us through unity and what our history has to teach us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. And our last Youth Ambassador speaker is Kevin Zaldana.
Good morning. My name is Kevin Zaldana, and I'm a freshman at UCLA. I got trained to be a peer guide by Anne Frank L.A. at Roosevelt High School in Boyle Heights. My family left El Salvador and came to the United States fleeing the instability caused by the Civil War. I never thought that the country my parents left would have any connection with Jewish history. Sophie shared with me that a Salvadorian diplomat helped her grandmother get fake documents to help keep them safe during the Holocaust. That just made learning about these topics that much more meaningful. When I first did the peer training, I thought it was going to be a regular school event held for a few weeks and just be over. Anne Frank L.A. and the Anne Frank Center in South Carolina have taught me so much and opened so many doors for me. If it weren't for their Holocaust education, I wouldn't be able to understand the complexity of current events. I got involved with Anne Frank L.A. through their peer guide training. We were taught about the traveling exhibit and Anne Frank's life and legacy. Through the traveling exhibit and dialogue, I have been able to have conversations and create connections with people and experiences with whom I would have never imagined. I've been able to take part in the U.S. National Youth Conference that takes place in South Carolina. I've been able to have dialogue with students from around the country to understand national and international issues that are affecting the youth, all which connect back to Holocaust education. The work of Anne Frank L.A. is extremely important because they bring Holocaust education to low-income, historically marginalized communities like mine, where placing an emphasis on Holocaust education is extremely important so that we can create those connections with our own communities. I was able to participate in the International Anne Frank Youth Conference that is held in Amsterdam, run by the Anne Frank House. This is an experience I would have never imagined I would be able to have. Experiences like these are ones that youth should have access to to create a safer and more tolerant world. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President. I don't know if there are any speakers on the queue, but I just want to note that in light of everything that's happening around the world, the rise of fascism, it is through stories from the past that we can most clearly see what we're facing today. And it's very hard to wrap your head around 6 million people being decimated. But perhaps counterintuitively, one young girl's story is the entry point for people. And so I would just want to thank everyone for being here today. Thank you, Councilmember Blumenfield, for being a part of this and allowing us to do this in a different way than maybe we have in the past. Yes, Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilmembers. We do have members on the queue. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you so much for bringing in this important presentation. And I want to thank you, Cameron. I want to thank all of you for your remarks. And I think, Cameron, I think you said it best, the idea that in the midst of her darkness, she still found the strength to find the path forward. We're sadly in that same moment today for many of us in our immigrant communities that are exposed to the very same kind of attacks, same libelous behavior that is only invigorating this amount of hate. This dynamic that we're experiencing right now is not unfamiliar to us, not just because of the history, and you talk about Anne Frank, and we know about the history of the Holocaust or the Armenian genocide. I mean, we have so many examples tragically to continue to cite that didn't end with the Holocaust. It sadly continues. But for you all, and the lessons that you're learning from those moments in history, what you have to take from it is that you are the heroes that we are looking for, that you have to look within yourself, each of us has to look within ourselves, about how we are going to change this dynamic and fight back intelligently to protect more members and more communities from being left to the same circumstance. So these are the moments where especially young people need to be invigorated and strengthened by their resolve, their experiences, and their voice. Because for so many immigrant communities that are experiencing right now, and I'm happy to see folks from the East Side getting this education, especially for those of you in Boyle Heights, from, you know, the history with the Shoal and the history of Boyle Heights, but that emanates throughout all the parts of Los Angeles. It's incredibly important that each of us take those experiences and turn them into action. And so for that, I want to thank you for joining us here today and for speaking here on the council, and I hope it's just the start of how you use your voice going forward. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Councilmember Rahman.
Thank you so much, Councilmembers Jaroslawski and Blumenfield, for bringing these students here and for showcasing the work of the Anne Frank Foundation. I have been so alarmed by the rise in the numbers of young people who say that they don't think the Holocaust was real. The amount of misinformation that is out there is scary, and it is a sign of how quickly this kind of misinformation can spread and how it can change how we respond to the current challenges that we're facing, which, as so many of you have said, are very real, that are, you know, impacting the Jewish community, but also so many of us across Los Angeles and our immigrant neighbors. I just want to thank you because hearing you, hearing the students speak today, and thinking about how we can use Anne Frank's voice as a way to bring about that understanding, I think it really, it moved me. And I think it's true. It is true that somehow one story out of 6 million can be more powerful, and I want to thank you for your focus on her voice as a pathway to understanding the impact of what happened during the Holocaust, but also how we can work to prevent something like that from ever happening again. So thank you all.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Nazarian.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you to my colleagues for bringing this extremely important issue at a time when it seems like when we should be in the age of information, where everything is readily available, research and data is available, yet we're still struggling with denialism. We're still struggling with people trying, not just trying, working actively on rewriting history. So I commend you for the wonderful work that you're doing. I just want to give you a little bit of a tidbit of what different people's struggles have helped one another become better aware and be able to finish off the work that maybe somebody else wasn't able to. On a dark note, it was Adolf Hitler in 1939 who said, "Who now remembers the Armenians?" Right as about he was starting to invade Poland. So he told his generals, you know, "We can do what we want to accomplish because no one's going to pay attention." He was wrong about that. But the world didn't learn quickly enough, and he was able to accomplish great horrific damage before being stopped. And in the very country of Poland, a gentleman by the name of Raphael Lemkin, who was born in the early 1900s, he was an attorney, and he was studying acts of inhumanity. And his attempt of working towards making the world understand what genocide is, which is the eradication of a whole people, fell short. It wasn't until after he was able to survive, come to the United States, and in 1944, help host the first genocide convention, that then he coined the term genocide, using what happened 30 years prior in Armenia. So these are very important historical aspects also, that you're helping to make sure that live on, and through your work, make sure others become aware. And you're continuing to finish off the work that others started before you. So thank you for the wonderful work that you're doing. And again, thanks to my colleagues for the work that they've done.
Thank you so much, Mr. Nazarian, and all the members who've spoken, and Councilmember Jaroslawski and Blumenfield. Thank you for bringing this presentation in the way that you brought it. I think it's especially poignant, especially in this moment, as so many people have said. But in Los Angeles, one of the things I love about this city is we don't just learn our stories, we learn the stories of our neighbors and the struggles of our neighbors. And so that people from the East Side and different parts of the city are learning through the compelling story of Anne Frank, which frankly, I still remember in fourth grade, learning about Anne Frank. And it made the Holocaust a different thing for me, a different visualization, and induced a different kind of empathy for the struggles that are inflicted upon humans by other humans and can happen at any point in history. And so thank you so much for the presentation, and I want to thank the students for coming forward and sharing your stories, and also giving us hope that when we see, you know, here in the U.S., things like books being banned, and you can't say woman or African-American in a government document, when we see stuff like that happening, it's heartening to know that our best and brightest know what that signals and are prepared for the struggle that may be engaged going forward. So thank you so much for your presentation. The woman in the black hat is disrupting the meeting, Mr. City Attorney, it's her first and last warning. All right, what's before us, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, the council may now consider item seven, for which amended motion 7A, Rodriguez Padilla, has been introduced, circulated, and posted on the bulletin board.
All right, so we can consider that item at this time?
Yes, sir.
All right, let's open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now consider item 53 on the continuation agenda, for which amended motion 53A, McOscar, has been introduced, circulated, and posted on the bulletin board.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
All right, what's next?
The council may now proceed to public comment.
All right, let's prepare and proceed with public comment.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, please state which of the agenda items you'd like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the council president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items that are open for public comment on the agenda are items one and two, items 30 through 52, and item 53 from yesterday's agenda, that's the item that's being reconsidered. So, and to be clear, that is the Little Tokyo Bid, the Business Improvement District. So let me repeat. The items that are open for public comment on the agenda are items one and two, items 30 through 52, and item 53 from yesterday's agenda that is being reconsidered, that is the Little Tokyo Business Improvement District. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. We will tell you when your time is up. I have a couple more announcements. If I can have the interpreters make this one aloud to the room, please. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so the interpreters can interpret. Don't worry, we will pause your time while the interpreters are doing their job, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else. Thank you. And one more announcement for everyone who's here. So as you can see, we have quite a few people here today. Again, as we stated, we will get through as many speakers as we can, but please wait until you hear the name that you signed up under called before lining up. So the way we do this is randomized, so please wait until you hear your name called, and once you hear that name, you can line up on your left-hand side of the council chambers, and you can do so in any order. Thank you.
I will now call names for public comment. Gloria Gámez, Evelyn Brinson, Whitney Beatty.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that one more time, the list of three? Thank you.
Gloria Gámez, Evelyn Brinson, Whitney Beatty.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Item 12.
So item 12 is not open for public comment, but you can speak to it during general, so you have one minute. Go ahead.
Okay. So, good morning, council members. My name is Gloria Gámez. I'm with United Parents and Students. I just want to thank you for passing the motion in support of Wefun, a guaranteed basic income program for workers impacted by the recent wildfires. Now, we urge you to ensure that this program is fully funded so it can truly reach the housekeepers, gardeners, street vendors, and other informal and service workers who last their livelihoods, lively livelihoods. These workers will easily recover from the sudden loss of income, and this is a critical opportunity to support them while they get back on their feet. So thank you so much, council members. So, thank you so much, council members.
Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
You have one minute, go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Evelyn Brinson, and I proudly stand before you as a social equity cannabis retailer at the Green Paradise located in Los Angeles, Council District, City, 10, Heather Huts District. I'm here today, not just as a business owner, I'm here as a survivor of a system that had made a promise, yet failed to uphold it. Many of you who helped write these policies have remained silent. Council President Markeith Harris-Dawson, Herb Wesson, Andrew Westhall, who currently serves as Heather Huts' current deputy, and many others who are in this room today. The promise was one of opportunity of equity, righting the historical wrongs inflicted by the communities like mine. I urge this council to take real corrective action, adopt the cannabis equity reform and market stabilization motion, disband the DCR, move the social equity program to the Department of Economic Development where it belongs, and extend the program to 2031 to align with SB 51. I yield my time.
Before the next speaker comes, I'd like to call a few more names. Janice Fokira, Kendra Sunderland, Eclasia Wesley, Maya Daniels.
So, I'm sorry, I think the applause was continuing before. Can you repeat the three names just really quick? Thank you.
Janice Fokira, Kendra Sunderland, Eclasia Wesley.
So again, if you're either, if you signed up under any of those three names, please feel free to line up on your left-hand side of the council chambers. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Good morning, my name is Whitney Beatty, and I'm a social equity cannabis retailer and owner of Josephine &amp; Billy's in South Los Angeles. We are being taxed into extinction while unlicensed shops flourish. We're being penalized for being compliant, punished for being visible, and left out of every real opportunity. This is not support, it's sabotage. Lowering cannabis taxes isn't a handout, it's a smart financial strategy. Cities like Oakland and San Francisco have already taken this step, and guess what? It worked. More operators stayed open, more jobs were protected, and more revenue came in. It's asinine that in Los Angeles, the largest legal market in the world, we have not done the same. If we cannot get equity right, what hope is there for the rest of the country? You have a chance to do the right thing, adopt the cannabis equity reform and market stabilization motion? Give us a chance, not just to survive, but to succeed.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Hi, this is for general public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Awesome. Good morning, Honorable City Council and Community, my name is Eclasia Wesley, and I'm a community engagement coordinator with LA General Medical Center Foundation with the Tobacco Control Prevention Program, representing Breathe Free LA, a community-led coalition focused on reducing the harms of secondhand smoke in multi-unit housing. Our mission is to create safe spaces to educate, empower, and elevate community voices while supporting efforts to aim and improve the quality of life for tenants of Los Angeles. I'm here today, our community advocates were actually here yesterday, to inform and educate community residents in the city of Los Angeles about healthy lungs and healthy life, free from tobacco and secondhand smoke. Our coalition has worked to plan an upcoming Breathe Free LA Town Hall meeting on April 24th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the La Plaza de Cultura Artist, located at 501 North Main Street. We hope you're able to attend, to meet with other advocates, and speak about the secondhand smoke issue. Thank you.
What is the name you sign up under? Absolutely, City Attorney, the name is...
Speaker, not your time yet. We haven't started your time. So, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Okay? So, I'll let you stand up, and then we will start your time.
The name I sign up under is Kendra Sunderland. Thank you very much. Start with item number 31. Item number 32.
Sorry, can we pause this time? Your time's held, don't worry. Mr. Herman, I noticed not only during this public speaker, but also during the presentations, you are clapping and disrupting this meeting. So, I know that you're familiar with this gentleman at the podium. I have never once seen him interrupt your public comment, so I'm going to ask that you please do not interrupt his public comment. This is your first and only formal warning. Thank you, go ahead.
Last warning, Mr. Herman.
What about the lady's voice?
Okay, so, I'm sorry, the woman in the center of the aisle, please do not disrupt this meeting. If you have a concern, feel free to talk to the sergeants, and we'll try to resolve it. Again, this is your first and only formal warning. Thank you.
Mr. City Attorney, you stalled me at 104. Right now, it's 57. I just want to let you know that. Item number 33. General public comment. Mr. City Attorney, I would like to know, bring your first attention that the black lady sitting behind Mr. Herman said, "I'm gonna kill you, I'm gonna kill your dog." So, this is my first issue with you, I want to make sure you protect Mr. Herman. Item issue number two, yesterday you told me that I need to go back to my seats and waiting for my name to be called. I follow your order because I don't want to get arrested by our LAPD. However, after when I take a seat, and then your friend announced, there will be no more public comment, there will be no more name will be called. So, I find it contradictory, your instruction told me go back to my seats and waiting for my name to be called. When I take a seat, waiting for my name, there's no more name. So, I just want to make sure, Mr. City Attorney, you do not have to discriminate me just because of my 3-inch size, and you only allow 24-inch-sized speaker to speak. I want to make sure, doesn't matter if a speaker has a 3-inch or 24-inch, everybody can be treated equally in the city council, and I will continue to respect your instruction. I'll always follow your order.
So, before the next speaker begins, a couple points of order. Obviously, we have people who express their First Amendment rights in various ways. To the last speaker, I'll just, for people who are new here, I will remind you again, if you would like a foreign language interpreter, please let us know, and we will do our best to accommodate that, but you need to let us know. For people who don't usually attend these meetings, I will say that we try to take as many speakers as we can. Obviously, there's a balance. And so, while we use a randomizer to make sure that it's fair, there's a chance that not everybody's going to have the opportunity to speak in any given meeting. There are always other opportunities at committee hearings. You can also provide written public comment at lacouncil.com if you would like. And for those of you that have either a digital copy or a hard copy of the agenda, that link or that URL is at the top of the agenda. So, if you run out of time, or if your name is not called because it just doesn't come up under the randomizer, you're more than welcome to provide a written public comment at lacouncilcomment.com. I'm sorry. Good morning. Which item would you like to speak to?
Good morning, and I have to tell you, it'll be a little tough after this, but I'll do my best to make comments. My name is Jan Fukuhara, and I'm speaking in reference to item 51, which was, 53, sorry, which was continued from yesterday, the conversion of a merchant-based to a property-based bid in Little Tokyo.
Okay.
Again, my name is Jan Fukuhara. I've been a resident and property owner, an individual resident, community member, and stakeholder, taxpayer, in Little Tokyo for the last 10 years. I would urge the council to consider the vote to approve the conversion from the merchant-based to the property-based bid. I live in an independent senior resident community, and we are faced daily with incidents of violence and vandalism, and we would feel much safer, even though today I'm speaking as an individual, to have more police presence because that would guarantee and maintain our well-being and our safety. So, I would appreciate the council for considering this, and I yield my time. Thank you very much.
I'd like to call more names. Maya Daniels, Olivia Garcia, Irene Sikata Simonin.
Okay, so I don't see anyone coming up for those names. Could we read another batch of three names, please? Oh.
I'll read a few more names. Ishman Barber, Kirsten Peterson, Elliot Lewis.
Thank you. So, Mr. Herman, before you begin, just, your time is not running, don't worry, you'll get your full time. So, for everybody who's here, I just want to flag it for you that I expect that we are going to hear some offensive things, to say the least. I hope that we don't. If you have headphones and would like to watch a video or listen to music at this time, that's fine. The Brown Act does not require you, the audience members, to listen to the public comment. So, I, you know, or if you'd like to step out for the next four minutes, you are also welcome to do so. But just, we appreciate your patience with this. Mr. Herman, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
That's right, motherfucker. I didn't put my name on the card, stop giving away my personal information, just like all of us have a right to not put the name.
So, you're welcome to speak to this during general. You know the drill. Then speak to the item, please.
Exemption. Item number two, the same fucking shit, an exemption. Why? We don't need no more of that shit. Are you stupid? Mr. Attorney, look at the East Side rider bike lane, stupid. Hey, stupid. East rider bikes, we don't need bikes. We need ADA compliance to ride a bike in a safe lane, fix a fucking sidewalk and streets. That's what the budget's about, stupid. Hey, stupid. Look at here. It says here the city-owned properties, just like the one down the street here on First Street at 200 West by the federal building, you need to fix a goddamn sidewalk and street. I can't ride my motherfucking bicycle. Retard, stupid, idiot moron. That was item 50, idiot. Look at number 53 on Mommy Hut, who don't want to help the people with their cannabis Measure 64. She should help them.
So, item 53 is not open for public comment. So, please move on to another item, on today's agenda at least. Go ahead.
Which one?
Item 53 on today's agenda is not open. Please move on to another item.
I heard you. So, regarding Los Angeles housing, all these housing items, not one stupid great idea from your stupid mayor or your stupid Dawson up there who created the fire up on the hills to burn all those people's homes. Where are you gonna place them, Dawson? We got all this Los Angeles housing, and not one motherfucker here can afford to pay $3,000 to $4,000 in rent or buy a fucking luxury apartment. That's housing? Is that, did you call housing, fool? Because I don't appreciate it. My black ass want to know what you're gonna do about it, like on item 43. Homeless service in Council District CD7. You don't need it there. You need it in every fucking district. There are homeless people in every fucking district. Donald Trump, Donald Trump, do not send California any more money. They are not spending the billions of dollars on homelessness like on item number 43, Mr. Groat, you stupid attorney. Pay attention, now onto my non-agenda public comment.
So, that's fine, but before you begin, so I'm getting complaints from the staff that when you yell into the microphone, so keep in mind, it's a microphone, we can hear you, I promise you. Please do not yell into the microphone, as there are multiple staff members who wear headphones in order to translate and monitor public comment, and it can hurt their ears. So, please do not do that. Go, you have one minute for general public comment.
The Bay Act, 52.3, states that you criminals cannot make criminal threats against the public by your rules of decorum, which violate prior restraint to my free speech. This shirt represents Cohen versus California. Fuck the draft. And fuck you, California. Gavin Newsom, what are you doing about the housing crisis? What are you gonna do for the Olympics when the sidewalks and the streets are not repaired or fixed? Where's the fucking budget, new scum? If the dumb, dumb mayor's going asking you for $2 billion, yes, it's gonna offset the $1 billion, the dumb cunts, what the K-U-N-T can't understand. There's no fucking money in Los Angeles, because you fools pay it out to the slip and falls. 42 C, 1983 politely. Fuck you, Groat.
That's it, you're done. We don't want to hear from you for the rest of the meeting. You have provided your public comment. Next speaker.
I was called. Yeah, I'm just waiting for the mic. I was called.
Thank you for your patience. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
My name is Maya Daniels, pronouns are they/them, and I'm the current policy associate with the Transatina Coalition. I'm honestly having some trouble understanding on the local level what the recommended budget is influenced by. I feel like ample data collection and community engagement needs to be prioritized in the making of the budget. It seems to me less democratic and more that what is in the recommended budget cannot easily be changed or altered after being released. It seems to me that at the local level, the budget is based more off of the perceived knowledge of the CEO and mayor's offices instead of being influenced off ample data collection and dispersal funds based off of populations and community needs. There is a population of transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex people being attacked. There is a population of black and brown immigrants being attacked. Your staffers and departmental workers are also your constituents. Take a stand and support those who support you. Thank you.
Hello? It's not working.
Oh, it's on now. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning. I want all items and public comment, but...
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
So, go again, all right, in a minute, so I get four? Because it gets confusing, so at different meetings.
Yes, we do, so, for everybody, you'll notice, we set the clock to however much time you want for the items, so in this case, three minutes for the items, and then we reset it for one minute for general public comment. So, you will get your full time. Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Nazarian left, and here I was gonna give him some kudos. I want to thank him for working on the bike path. I agree, I'm glad you're, you know, doing that and continuing that good work, it's coming along nicely. But I also wanted to ask, in honor of my friend Amy, who is Jewish, and she can't call in and ask for this, because Mr. President kind of likes to have dalliances with prior restraint and not allow people to call in.
So, you're welcome to speak to this during general.
Okay, well, she would like, and we would all like, a plaque honoring, you know, the Holocaust on the bike path, in that same agenda item, it's the one about the bike path on, in CD2. Sorry, I didn't mean to yell for the interpreters. Okay, we would like a plaque, because he's putting furniture in it, the furniture, can we please have a plaque that honors the Holocaust, but she also wants you to know that, you know, like he also wisely said that there's so much information out there about truth and stuff that you... that you guys are ignoring Scientology, like people are denying the Holocaust. So, okay, there's a lot of information for you to look up, but we would like a plaque.
So you've exhausted your...
All right, the next, the next one is the Leamark Park. I'm wondering, and I bet Smoke and Scan is wondering, too. We'll find out on the replay, if the whole Leamark Park thing that you need ambassadors, is that to keep us from being mugged because the parks are, have gotten really scary? Sometimes you see needles or whatever, you know, but it gets scary. So why is there ambassadors in the park? I mean, just curious. Not, I'm not complaining. And whoever's like heckling, can you please, you know, if they're heckling, they need to stop. But don't tell me to shut the F up. I'm, this is my time. Can you pause my time and correct them, please? I've been told to shut the F up. All right, you stopped their time to stop him from clapping, uh, as support, but you won't stop my time for him to not to tell me to shut the F up. Is that because, uh...
Okay.
That's prior restraint.
I can't hear what's going on. I'm gonna keep going to, all right, hold her time for a second. So members of the audience, again, I would ask that you, if you hear things that you disagree with, which may very well happen, that you please do not disrupt other people's public comment. And I would ask that, that goes the same for everybody else. So go ahead.
Oh, it's so nice that you so nicely asked them, where you threatened everybody else to get kicked out. Now I'm off topic. I mean, I can't even remember where I am. I'm shook up by being told to shut the F up. I'm not used to being talked to like that, because I don't talk to people like that, but it's whatever. So, you know, I guess with all the houses, yeah, you know what, why don't you give them to the unhoused? They could use those houses. I see you're dumping a lot of houses. That could be used for people. And I'm glad to see that you're going to be building houses. But I'm really disgusted that you guys would allow people to tell me to shut the F up in public. You're just, you know, that's disgusting. They weren't raised right, obviously. Oh, Dunn, let's talk about the Dunn one, number forty-nine. Yes, I would love to have you guys do that, but make it free for all the neighborhood councils to do, because you're about to vote in a budget that you will probably be depriving neighborhood councils of 10,000 bucks every, each of their years. So...
General public comment.
Okay, general public comment. Been waiting for this. Mr. City Attorney, you owe me an apology, and I believe Smoke and Scan will agree, because we haven't seen each other in a couple of weeks. And you threw me off topic when I was on topic, and you came back and said, yes, you're, you were on topic, but you never apologized for that. Council President owes me an apology, because I had the mic in my hand to talk, like I do now, but you snatched, had it snatched for me before I got to speak, even though there was plenty of time. There's still another 10 minutes. So you owe me an apology, and I'm here to collect from the both of you. All right, and then, oh, and Smoke and Scan, and I also want to know, and I know, you know, I'm sorry for speaking for Smoke and Scan, but I know he wants to know this. Your stupid little randomizer. We want proof that there's a randomizer. Is there, is the randomizer somebody closing their eyes and like picking, you know, names, or is there an actual randomizer? Can you please prove it for transparency's sake? How are you randomizing the names? Because it seems to me that the people you don't want to talk, now we have to all, what, use fake names, because we can't use our own names, because your little randomizer's gonna kick us off?
We, we always...
And you know what? Shut up. You don't tell me what I need to do.
Your, your speaker, your time has expired.
We, we always appreciate hearing from you and look forward to hearing from you more in the future. I apologize if we didn't make you feel that way one day. So we'll look forward to it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you. Your turn.
Good morning, Speaker. Which items would you like to speak to?
I'm here to speak about yesterday's fifty-three.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is, thank you. My name is Irene Sukada-Simonian, and I get three minutes, right?
Hold her time. So actually, you get one minute per item, and then you can also have a minute for general public comment, where you can talk about anything in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. So...
But for agenda items?
For the agenda items, yes. So I think you requested the Little Tokyo bid item, so that's one minute. Are there other items you'd like to speak to? Okay. So what we'll do is we'll do one minute for the item and one minute for general public comment. So you'll see one minute, and then we'll, you'll see another minute afterwards. You'll hear the beep, and then that's general public comment. Go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Irene Sukada-Simonian. I'm the owner of Bunkado Gift Shop at three four zero East First Street. I'm the third-generation family member operating this business since nineteen forty-seven. I'm here to voice my strong support for the conversion of the Business Improvement District to a property-based system. Little Tokyo is only among two bids left in LA County that is not property-based, and for good reason. The current merchant-based system is inadequate, especially when a third of the businesses ignore the invoices they receive from the city clerk's office, and there is zero enforcement. I'm the owner of the building that houses my business, so why am I in favor of the increased assessment? It's because of the returns the community and I will receive in the form of proper security coverage, regular street cleaning, street trash, and graffiti removal, and social media promotion. I do not believe there's one person in Little Tokyo who would argue that these improvements are not positive developments and necessary for the community's health. I've heard complaints from some that there is a lack of transparency and insufficient community forums, but I have found through firsthand experience that community forums are actually the least effective way to communicate with the community. The Little Tokyo Business Association has been going to the stakeholders, not asking them to come to them, and they are explaining to affected stakeholders about the conversion. I wish we didn't have to pay any assessment. I wish that the city provided these services. But I understand the city cannot afford it, and we have to come up with our own funds, but this is the only way we can allow us to help ourselves. I ask the Honorable City Council to approve this proposal, thereby ensuring the successful future of this culturally important historic gem that is Little Tokyo. Thank you.
Ooh, good timing.
My name's, my name's Elliot Lewis. I'm the Catalyst Cannabis CEO. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Cannabis Equity Program in LA. We're here as an ally to support all the licensees in the city.
And which item is that? I'm sorry.
It's not, it's just open public comment.
See, you have one minute for general public comment. Go ahead.
Yep. You know, I want to say a special thanks to Councilwoman Padilla. She did a great job of interrogating the DCR. Obviously, they need to bring a lot more information forward. My opinion's real simple. Just abolish the DCR. Their answers about not being able to understand what the state really meant, let me help you with the translation. The translation was, oh, we didn't know we could steal all the money and pay ourselves really high salaries and not give it to the people that it was promised to. When you have the state of California auditing you and taking your money, there's a major issue, right? And I'm here to say this, real quick, and nobody here actually thinks the tax money's going to any good use at all, right? We need a hero. We need a hero bad to pass a motion and save an industry. Your own police officers are telling us not to pay because they're not gonna do anything. Why should we pay? Until we get services, Catalyst Cannabis Co. and a bunch of others coming soon are withholding our tax money from the city of LA. Equity for the people, weed for the people.
General comment?
Good morning. You have one minute. Go ahead.
My name is Ishman Barber, owner, operator, dispensary in the city of Los Angeles. I'm here to say to some of you in this building right now, somebody's responsible for sending tactical alert, tactical cops to our ex-guerrilla on Crenshaw Boulevard to collect tax money. This is, keep happening over and over and over. Somebody in this building right now knows this is going on, and somebody in this building can stop this now. You need to stop this. This is unfair. This is not right. You come into our stores and taking our money like we're just some criminals on the street, but you allow three to 4,000 illegal dispensaries and smoke shops to sell untested marijuana to our children, to your kids, to your kids, okay? When you come to our stores, our product is tested. You guys continue doing what you're doing. We all gonna pay for it. Not just me, but all of us in this building, you, you, and you.
So, Mr. President, I believe we've taken a little more than 30 minutes of public comment. Would you like to close public comment at this time?
Close public comment? Yeah, close public comment.
Okay. So, again, if you were unable to speak today, we would welcome you back at a future meeting. You can also provide written public comment at la council dot com. One more announcement, we have a creation of a bid item. That's item fifty-three that's being reconsidered from yesterday. So if there's anyone who has not yet spoken, emphasis on not yet spoken, who is here to speak on item fifty-three, that is the little, the creation of the Little Tokyo Business Improvement District. You'll have one minute to do so. I would ask that you line up on the left-hand side of council chambers now. Again, that is only for item fifty-three that's being reconsidered, the Little Tokyo Business Improvement District creation.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Ellen Endo. I am, I am with the co-chair of the Little Tokyo Business Improvement District. It's a merchant-based bid. We've been operating since 2003, so it's, it's 22 years now, and we want to convert to a property-based bid. And I, I want to emphasize that we are, we are a community that, that is growing. We, you don't have to take my word for it. Just walk down the street, a couple blocks east, and you'll see, you'll see people lined up in the restaurants. You'll see lots of people of all ages going, having fun, enjoying the area. And we thank baseball for that in part, but, but also we thank, you know, the people of Los Angeles for discovering Little Tokyo. So I, I basically want to say, this is, this is a key moment for us, and I, I look forward to your support. Thank you.
Good morning. Go ahead. You have one minute for the item.
Item fifty-three and general public comment.
So...
Two minutes, please.
Before you start his time, so we have closed public comment on all other items, and that includes general public comment, but you have one minute...
Can somebody make a motion to open it back up, please? You have all these people here from the community who have taken time away from their businesses, from their families.
Understood.
Can we please be heard for one minute each, please?
I hear you.
Somebody, make a motion.
Speaker, for right now, you have one minute for item fifty-three.
We're dying out here, please.
That is the creation of the Little Tokyo bid item.
Rodriguez, please. The councilman has abandoned us. He's left. Current, please, make a motion to open public comment, please.
Okay, so again, you have one minute.
Unisys, please. Somebody. McCosker, please. A motion to reopen public comment.
Okay, so hold his time. Everybody, I understand that there are a lot of people here.
Current, can we get a motion?
So, hold on. I hear, there, I believe, Mr. Cook, there's a motion from Councilwoman Padilla to reopen public comment for additional fifteen, fifteen minutes. Second for Mr. Pre, multiple seconds. Okay.
Mr. President, a vote should be taken upon this matter?
Okay.
Without objection, we'll continue public comment for 15 minutes.
So, what we're gonna do then is, because we have to exhaust public comment on the Little Tokyo bid item. Speaker, I know you're already here. I'm gonna ask, after you get, after you get done, and I'll ask you which items you want to speak to, I'm gonna ask that the staff continue to read out three names at a time. That will be, again, we'll do our best, but it will be at random.
Do you want me to come back? You can exhaust the Tokyo people, and I'll come back.
No, 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 we'll do that afterwards. So again, which items would you like to speak to? You said fifty-three?
Fifty-three, thirty-one, thirty-two.
And you said general, right?
And general.
So you're gonna have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
Thank you.
Go ahead and begin with the items.
Thank you. My name's Madison Shagley. I'm a social equity entrepreneur and licensee in District Eight, where I own the dispensary called The Cadre. I've been in this social equity program for seven years. Herb Wesson ushered this in as a promise for restorative justice. Marquise Harris-Dawson stood next to him. Council, uh, Current Price stood next to them.
Speaker, which item are you speaking to?
General public comment.
So...
Are you gonna police everyone?
Go ahead.
Are you gonna police everyone?
Hold his time.
Or do I have to sing? Do I have to sing in a language you don't understand to get my time?
Hold on, your time is paused, and, and we have reopened public comment. I'm gonna ask for everybody's patience.
Okay, I'm gonna give one warning. We have to conduct city business here. I'm gonna give one warning to everyone disrupting this meeting. If a second warning, if second, if I have to acknowledge you second time of disrupting this meeting, you will be asked to leave.
And to answer the question, we have to treat everybody equally here. So...
That's right. That's all we're asking for.
I have to make sure that you're doing the items first and general public comment second. So I'm not trying to take anyone's time. If you, you know, speak within those guidelines, we'll be good.
Public comment first.
So I'd ask that you continue with the items first, and then you'll get your one minute of general public comment afterwards.
That's fine. Thank you for the time. I have four minutes.
You've already used three minutes, so you've got two minutes, 27 seconds, and then the minute for general public comment after. And if you...
Please restore my time, at least three minutes.
So you've already used 30 seconds.
You're using my time. You're using my time.
You're just wasting time. We've given 15 minutes to additional public comment. Proceed, proceed with the directions. You've, you spent 30 seconds talking about this.
And we paused your time. I can't give you more time without giving everybody else more time, including the people who were saying things that were offensive, to say the least. Go ahead.
This is the reason we're upset. We're, we're being filibustered instead of listening to while our businesses burn. We're, we're going into debt. I have close to a million dollars in tax debt while illegal dispensaries pay no taxes, face no enforcement. My store has been raided by the state militarized raids. Twenty SUVs pull up, 40 people armed, disarming my security, and you guys allow this to happen. And this hasn't just happened to me, it's happened to several of our equity entrepreneurs. Some people have been raided four times this month, and y'all stand silent while we suffer. We're cannabis companies. We're not federally recognized. We can't go bankrupt. So when, when we go out of business...
Speaker, this is not on the agenda. So this is your last opportunity. Please stick to the agenda. I'm gonna move you to general public comment. Go ahead.
All right, next speaker.
What's the instruction, Mr. City Attorney?
I need you to stick to the agenda items, or you can move to general public comment, where you can talk about this.
But you didn't, you said this is equal for everybody. When he sat up here and sang songs, you did not stop him. He was not on topic.
Mr. City Attorney, we are not going to argue this anymore. We've given additional 15 minutes. You are just taking up time from everyone else that's trying to speak on the subject. So your, your public comment has been heard. We are on the next speaker.
And if we could have the staffer read out three additional names at a time, please? Go ahead. Hold on, just a second.
I'm gonna call out additional names. Christopher Martinez, Luis Rivera, Abella Danger.
Which items would you like to speak to?
General public.
One minute. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Greetings, council members, esteemed colleagues. My name is Sunshine. I'm a social equity applicant, and here's the thing. Leadership is a matter of eating last and serving your people. And the Department of Cannabis Regulations seems to have made a system where they're eating first and not taking care of the people who are actually doing the frontline work and actually out there collecting the funds, so that way we could fund this entire wonderful experience of freedom of speech and democracy. Mr. Current Price has said that he's going to bring a motion. Thank you so much, sir. Really, this is a matter of super importance for us. The urgency is dire, and what we're looking is for you guys to please adopt the Cannabis Equity Reform Market Stabilization Act, move the social equity program to the economic department where it belongs, and to align with the, with the SB 51. Because when the moratorium for people like Full of Morse to come in, they're gonna kill us. Thank you.
Next speaker. Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Today's Wednesday, April 23rd, 2025. Employee 76266, or prior employee 76266, with the email address of C-H-A-V-E-Z dot D-R dot L-L-C at iCloud dot com, has not heard, seen emails, texts, calls, anything in the mail pertaining monies owed to earning it while working for the city of Los Angeles and partners. This agency works with... This agency works with other agencies, has transferred funds that was supposed to be kept here in the City of Los Angeles, offered people a government-issued EBT card as another psychological warfare tactic to hide that slavery still exists for the brown communities and others whose voices are still trying to be silenced for not getting their accurate pay.
Before the next speaker comes, I'd like to call a few more names. Asia Allen, Metall Mansuri, Angela White.
Morning.
Good morning.
Which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general public comment.
Okay, one minute, go ahead.
Good morning, city council members. Uh, my name is Luis Rivera, and I'm here not only as an advocate, but a licensee who for years has faced repeated delays, unclear guidance, and unnecessary financial strain caused by the dysfunctional Department of Cannabis Regulation. Before the city approves any fee increases, the DCR must fix what's broken, the licensing process is overcomplicated, far too slow, and riddled with inefficiencies. The department needs to streamline its, uh, process, trim unnecessary staff, and focus on expediting licenses, costs would drop and tax revenue would increase. The fee study that they conducted needs to be done by an independent third party, um, and, and those of us that are in the, uh, program like social equity license holders. I respectfully urge you in the city council to reject the proposed fee increases until an independent third party is, uh, can, can, can conduct that, and we adopt the Cannabis Equity Market and Stabilization Act, as well as extend the social equity program to two thousand and thirty-one to align with the state. Thank you.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, I'll be speaking to general comment as well.
One minute, go ahead.
My name is Asia Allen, and I'm a social equity license holder and owner of Dope Sugar Lacinenga, a black woman-owned LGBTQ-led dispensary in District Ten. The City of Los Angeles received twenty-two million dollars in state equity funding. That money was meant to support operators like myself to level the playing field while we waited months and months and months, sometimes over a year, for grants that were promised, while we're still expected to pay the forty to fifty percent in taxes, while we couldn't. We also have interest and penalty fees up to fifty percent. When the City of Los Angeles is late delivering our grants, where's our fifty percent penalty? Where's our payback? Where's our retributions? I paid almost eight thousand dollars in annual license fee, I paid almost ten thousand in environmental review, and another nine thousand just to review, renew my, my license. Meanwhile, unlicensed shops are still going. Social equity, we're African-American. The Elisa shops, they're Armenian.
Time, your time has expired, so we're gonna have to move on to the next speaker.
Hello, my name is Christopher Martinez, I'm gonna speak on general comments.
Okay, good morning, you have one minute.
Um, I'm a social equity license holder as well, so is my cousin. Um, it's been a difficult process, it's taken us six, five, six years to just get from application to opening up, and even once we opened up, we faced many hurdles. Um, before my public comment ends, I do wanna encourage the council to support and move for, uh, cannabis equity reform and the market stabilization motion. I think it's an urgent, uh, item, urgent, uh, topic to touch on to ensure that the cannabis industry in general is saved in this, in this city. We're one of the, the fifth largest economies in the world, the state of California, with the city of Los Angeles being the biggest cannabis market, yet the cannabis market is struggling. We pay our taxes, we pay our fees, yet we don't get any return on our investment. We got a thirty percent partner off the top of any, any money that we make that does not give us anything in return, other than enforcement, overtaxation, and over fines. So I encourage you guys to help us out, you guys got us in a chokehold right now. We have put blood, sweat, and tears into our businesses, and we might not make it because of the overtaxation and over fines. Please help us with the social equity grants. Don't just take them away from us, give them directly to us.
Speaker, your time has expired. Next speaker.
Before the next speaker comes, I'd like to call a few more names. Ann Simon, Tina Phelps, Luis Lopez.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general comment.
You have one minute, go ahead.
Uh, good afternoon. I own a dispensary, um, in Los Angeles called Dope Sugar on Melrose, District Five, formerly known as sixty-four and Hope. Um, I'm also a single mom, and I'm here today to shed light on the harsh reality that we are dealing with as social equity owners. The promise for social equity was supposed to be an opportunity for those harmed by the war on drugs to thrive in the legal market, do it the right way. Um, instead, we are being crushed under excessive taxation, denied access to fair grants and funding that were meant to support us. Um, so we've got illegal shops that aren't subject to these high costs of doing business, and we are getting taken forty to fifty percent where they're thriving and we are struggling. So, they also steal from us and then sell at a hundred percent margins as well. So we're asking, I'm asking the Government Operations Committee to adopt the Cannabis Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Motion, move the social equity program to the Department of Economic Development where it can actually serve us.
Speaker, your time has expired.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, uh, number four and general comment.
Okay, so, item number four is not open for, for public comment, but you can speak to it during general, so you have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Um, council members, I provide all, you've heard people talk about the Cannabis Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Grant, uh, motion, I ask you all to read it. I'm, I represent, uh, the Black Los Angeles Cannabis Council. We represent social equity operators, black and brown, across the City of Los Angeles. We are in a state of emergency. Hello, everyone, we are in a state of emergency. We are in a state of emergency. It is imperative, we provide public comment, I provide evidence of the DCR supplanting millions of dollars. Look at your budget, they have to give back ten billion dollars because they supplanted funds for administrative fees and charged us licensing fees, will you look at the evidence? Will you read it? Will you take meetings with us? In any other, any other business, they would be fired by now. We're asking you to pay attention, please read and please take meetings with us, thank you.
Before the next speaker comes, I'd like to call a few more names. Ouija Whitmore, Raven McSweeney, Kendrick Moxon.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general?
You have one minute, go ahead.
Okay, well, uh, my name is Ronnie Melton, I'm actually a social equity applicant and operator out of Los Angeles, I'm also a CEO and founder of Sephora the Cannabis Co. Um, I am the very face of like what DCR tried to represent, um, I got arrested when I was eighteen, when I was just smoking a joint, uh, they put me as possession, and right now, DCR put in this program saying that they're gonna help us out and, you know, put in, like, you know, give us licenses and startup programs. That is a lie. Right now, I'm facing evictions, I'm facing penalties, I'm facing all this stuff because of all of the people that are working in DCR are funneling their pensions and not giving it to us, and it's really months, my, no offense, but it's bullshit, and right now, I'm startled, I'm so mad, uh, right now for my people and for me, because I'm struggling, I'm on the bus coming over here, trying to talk to you guys, trying to plead to you that this is not working, DCR needs to stop and try to help us out instead of trying to implement new programs and try to do other stuff that doesn't reflect us.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Good morning, hi.
And before you begin, you can feel free to adjust the mic, if you'd like.
Oh, thanks, I was up on my tippy toes. Okay, hi, so I'm Ouija Whitmore, I work in the cannabis industry, I'm a sales rep for the brands, and I'm here asking the Government Operations Committee to adopt the Cannabis Equity Reform and Market Stabilization Motion, move the social equity program to the Department of Eco, Economic Development where it can actually serve us, extend the program to two thousand and thirty-one, and finally, disband the DCR. It has lost our community's trust. Thank you so much.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Public comment.
Yeah, one minute, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Raymond, I'm with the African Town Coalition, yeah, um, our people went through the war on drugs during the eighties, where the CIA crack cocaine and drugs to our community, so, the foundation of Black America, we built this country, though. That's actually disrespectful, y'all, quoting our story with people that's not from this country, though, so that's actually disrespectful, though. And I noticed that Marquise Harris-Darson don't talk about reparations, don't talk about systemic harms done to our people in this country. Our people face the most hate crimes in this country, though. Where's the hate crime task force of Los Angeles addressing systemic harms that's done to our people in this city, though? The C, the CEO, Alasa Lavisia, she's being federally investigated by Bill Estley, though, the federal government for misappropriating federal funds, though. And over ten people in L.A. homes die a day, most people in Scared Road are mostly black people that's down in Scared Road. We go all throughout Compton, South Central, Inglewood, the houses our people, though, we don't see none of these housing agencies doing it, so I'm kind of glad they got the funding.
I'd like to call Cindy Andrade, Dylan Kuskin, Janet Wayland.
Okay, so I'm not seeing anyone with those names coming, I don't see anybody coming up to the podium at this point, so.
I will call additional. We're gonna take two more speakers, and then, um, obviously move to item number fifty-three, so we'll take two more speakers, and then we'll close public comment.
I will call additional names. Armando Flores Junior, Edgar Torres.
I see one person coming up, going once on the other name, going twice, we, one more name, we're, yep.
Christina Boyar.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
How's it going for general public comment?
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Howdy, my name is Edgar Torres, we work with a great number of social equity applicants, not just throughout the state, but more importantly, here in L.A. County and L.A. City. We've seen firsthand the damages that inefficiencies can cause, but we're not here to look at the past. Let not your inactions be the shadow in which we reside. Take action, come together with us as a whole, let us align with the state, and play the game correctly. Come together as a whole so that our industry can thrive, and we can help fuel this machine that not only stands for public comments like these, but also for righting wrongs. So I urge you right now, right your wrongs. Let us come together, let us find a path forward, and let us move together into the future. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna close, close public comment. Mr. City Attorney, I believe we still have to hear comments from, uh, regarding item number fifty-three in the bid?
Yes, so that is, uh, for everyone who's still here, that is item number fifty-three on yesterday's agenda that is being reconsidered. So, if you have not yet spoken on item fifty-three from yesterday's agenda, that is the Little Tokyo Bid item, please feel free to line up. If you have, on, on the left-hand side of council chambers, if you've already used your total of four minutes, that means if you've already used your three minutes on the other items, and one minute for general, th, then you, you've already been given your time to speak. So, again, if you are here for the one minute on item number fifty-three from yesterday's agenda, the creation of the Little Tokyo Business Improvement District, please line up on your left-hand side of the council chambers. I can't tell, because I know people are lined up there, I can't tell if anybody's there for, can you please raise your hand if you're here for the little, creation of the Little Tokyo, Little Tokyo Bid item? Nope, going once, going twice, or... Okay, we have one person who's coming up now. Good morning, go ahead, you have one minute.
My name is Joanne Kumamoto, and I've been the co-chair of the Merchant-Based Bid as a volunteer for, since the beginning. Uh, we're, we're just, after COVID, the merchants are the ones that have been supporting the bid, and we've only been able to pay for one security officer, and very minimum, we have a lot of volunteer people coming out to help us do the cleaning. So if we can get those, the, the property owners in Little Tokyo have stepped up, and the majority of them have said they would help provide twenty-four-seven security, as well as cleaning services, to, to supplement what the city's able to provide. We've had over a million, um, increase in, in visitors in Little Tokyo over the last year, and we really need to have additional security, as well as additional cleaning services, just to provide what we can for those people who are visiting.
Speaker, your time has expired.
So I urge everyone to support, um, the, the Property-Based Bid. Thank you.
Okay, I do not see anyone else here, Mr. President, that is here to speak on that item, so.
Okay, now that we've taken public comment, I'm not closing public comment on all items and general public comment. Mr. Clerk, what, uh, items can council vote on?
Mr. President, the council may now vote on items one, two, thirty through fifty, and fifty-two.
All right, Mr. Clerk, can you please open the roll on those items? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
All right, Mr. Clerk, let's move on to the items that the members called special for discussion.
Yes, Mr. President, the council may not consider item fifty-one, called special by Councilmember Price for recusal.
Okay, Councilmember Price is leaving. I believe Councilmember Price has left the room. Let's open the roll on item fifty-one. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. President, the council may now consider item twenty-two, called special by Councilmember Hurdalo, for which amended motion twenty-two A, Hurdalo Hernandez, has been introduced, circulated, and posted on the bulletin board.
Okay, Councilmember Hurdado, do you wish to make any comments on this item?
No.
Okay, so we'll vote on the amendment first?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're gonna, colleagues, we're gonna amend, uh, vote on the amendment on item number twenty-two. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
The next vote is to consider the item as amended by amended motion twenty-two A, Hurdalo Hernandez.
All right, open the roll on that, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
What's next?
The council may now consider item fifty-three on the April twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, twenty-five council agenda, which is council file number two-five dash zero four zero eight, for the communication from the city clerk and ordinance of intention first consideration relative to establishment of the Property-Based Little Tokyo Property and Business Improvement District to levy assessments on real property.
All right, let's see, open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Mr. President, there is a request to send this item forthwith.
Without objection.
Council has motions proposing a referral.
Post and referred.
The desk is clear, sir.
All right, members, any announcements? Oh. Councilmember Price.
For you forth, forthwith, please.
Without objection, that will be the order. Councilmember Hurdado, you're on the queue, did you want to, something you want to say?
Oh, yes, um, I wanted to speak on a motion, um, today regarding what many of you've seen over the weekend. DTLA suffered from an inconscionable act of vandalism with someone cutting down several trees in the public right-of-way, and for many of our DTLA residents, the public right-of-way is an extension of their home, their urban backyard. So the loss of these trees is personal, especially for a community that so fiercely advocates for the revitalization of their neighborhood. We know this is a random, one-time occurrence, but we, the city family and community members were quick to ask, act. BSS had done some incredible work to confirm that the trees will be replaced, urban forestry was quick to clean it up, and as our tree count is more important as ever, and we grapple with climate change, and our city budget is too fragile of a state to allow these type of offenses to stand, that's why today I'm...
that's why today I'm introducing a motion to deter similar incidents from happening in any part of our city. And so to my colleague, Councilmember Padilla, thank you for reaching out as soon as you learn about this incident, offering your support. And Councilmember Nazarian as well. And thank you to the city departments for quickly mobilizing to get solutions. And to our beautiful DTLA constituents that identify the problem, Northeast Trees, LA Conservation Corps, who's helping us come up with solutions to make sure we can replace those trees. This is exactly the co-governance looks like, an example of how holistic public safety my office seeks to achieve. Stay tuned for more news regarding the replacement of the trees, thank you.
Mr. President, there's also a request to send item 46 forthwith.
Without objection, that should be the order. Members, any announcements? Seeing no announcements, can we please stand for adjourning motions? On my right. Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you. Colleagues, today I rise with a heavy heart to adjourn in the memory of Jesús Portillo, a devoted husband, father, and member of our community whose life was taken too soon. Jesús was 50 years old. Born on June 21st, 1974, he built a life grounded in love, responsibility, and kindness. He was an avid equestrian who enjoyed caring for his animals and took great pride in his work. He was known for his strong work ethic and his unwavering dedication to his family. He leaves behind his wife of 25 years and their four children who now face the unimaginable loss of a man who meant everything to them. On the night of April 6th, just after 9:00 PM, Jesús was struck by a dark-colored sedan while trying to help a loose dog cross Devonshire Street in Mission Hills. The driver never stopped, never offered help, and instead fled the scene. That driver still has not been identified. Jesús's final act was one of compassion. He did not hesitate to step in and help. That was the kind of person that he was. It was a senseless act that took away someone deeply cherished by his family and community. And to anyone who may have witnessed the collision or who has information that could help identify the person responsible, I ask that you please come forward. A $50,000 reward is being offered for information that leads to the arrest and conviction of that suspect. Even the smallest detail can make a difference. Please contact Valley Traffic Officer Takashida at 818-644-8116. If you prefer to remain anonymous, you can also just call LA Crime Stoppers at 1-800-222-TIPS or visit www.lacrimestoppers.org. As we adjourn today in the memory of Jesús Portillo, I ask that we keep his family in our thoughts and continue to do everything that we can to bring justice as they deserve. May he rest in peace.
Any other members on my right? Any members on my left? All right, this meeting is now adjourned.
...on their streets and they're going out to homeless encampments and trying to serve people, get them the care they need, you know, again, collect dirty syringes, that's what we call it, syringe exchange.
Yeah.
And really get some very hard-to-reach people into care and treatment. So there is extraordinary work done out of that office.
Have you seen a lot of success in that area? The numbers have changed, one would hope, over the years?
Absolutely, HIV rates are going down, city and countywide, which is a wonderful thing. We're hoping that, you know, stays in place over the next few years as some changes happen in Washington, mostly around funding and policy. But the city has been very committed to that space. Now, we're in a tough budget time right now, we're hoping that that office remains supported the way it needs to be. And also looking at working with other departments and the mayor's office and council around utilizing some of the opioid settlement funding, which again is around overdose prevention because our office, and I think most people in the city don't know this, the AIDS Coordinator's Office and Department of Disability does the most trainings and gives away the most naloxone, the drug that's used to reverse overdoses, of anybody that's in the city family that comes out of the AIDS Coordinator's Office.
And it's under the Department on Disabilities?
Absolutely, so we are literally saving lives by helping to train people out in the community and giving them the tools they need to help literally save lives and reverse overdoses.
Are those folks that work in public schools? Like who is it that does that kind of training?
The training are community-based providers that we contract with. They've come and trained our staff, they've trained some other department staff. We are working with other folks like libraries, for example, where they might run into folks who need the assistance. And there's something again called Narcan or naloxone, which is, you know, an inhaler essentially one uses. And if you utilize it on someone who's having an overdose, it will stop that overdose and literally save a life. And we're talking hundreds, if not thousands, of lives that have been saved from that program already.
Right. When you're looking at the numbers of the people that you, that your department serves, how are those numbers affected by an aging population? Does that matter?
Well, it does matter, and Los Angeles is an aging population in general, right? There's a significant percentage of Angelenos that will be over 65 in the coming decades. When we talk broadly about people with disabilities in LA, it's a moving target as to the number, the percentage of people who have a disability. Okay, it depends on who you ask.
Sure.
So I use a number that's between 18% and 25% of the population, it's a significant number. If you go with the American Community Survey out of the census, out of the US Census, their numbers range between 13% and 20%, depends on which year they're doing their report. If you look at employment data, sometimes it's only 10% because most people don't disclose their disability in an employment application unless they have to or they need an accommodation. So we've got a lot of different numbers. Again, 18% to 25% is my target range. But people who are aging, people over 65, have 40% to 45% of them have a disability and are aging into disability. So this is a world where we need to make sure accessibility is really expanded across all our services and programs because not quite the majority, but we're getting closer, plurality of the population are gonna be people with disabilities in the coming decades.
So, does that mean your department is responsible for identifying?